How is my word for extent for personal reasons?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregapped and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now please a moment of silent prayer for Arabella Parker, the three-year-old who was horribly beaten, and for all children who suffer from abuse across the world. Thank you, please have a seat. If you have a cell phone on you, please turn on vibrate, turn it on, make sure it doesn't make any noise that goes to council as well.
Roll call, please.
Karlovic, Kramer, Reichter, Reister.
A work session was held on October 21st to discuss and plan the budget for the 2020 fiscal year, and an executive session was held immediately afterwards to discuss personnel matters and real estate. Is there any audience comment on agenda items only at this time? All right, mister.
Thanks. I'm here tonight to briefly explain and take questions on two pieces of business that must be acted on by council for the community development block grant for a grant for you to remain current. The first is an update to the CDVG home procurement policy. There's a regulation into the Pennsylvania municipal code, 2 CFR Part 200, that deals with how to procure our services if you're using CDVG money. Two of the procurement parts of the procurement policy have changed. One is for micro purchases, which doesn't require any type of competitive soliciting. So if the city is using CDVG dollars to purchase something at $3,000 or less, you don't need to get any solicitations for quotes. Second threshold that changed is that is a small purchase threshold. If the city is soliciting for something of $10,000 or less, you just need to make phone calls to receive free quotes for those services. I know you have met your procurement obligations. The rest of the policies have stayed the same. Anytime that the city is going into a construction contract, they must go out for competitive bid. There's no, it doesn't matter if it's $200, there must be a competitive bid if it's for construction. And finally, all competitive proposals for professional services like engineering must go out on a request for proposals where people are invited to respond. Letters are sent directly, and if it's for more than $250,000 in services, there must be an ad put into the paper. Any questions? These policies must all be updated every five years, or if there is a change, whichever comes first. So when I'm, I guess maybe, I don't know if we want to take care of both of them at the same time, and we want to, council will need to vote on the new policy that I just explained, so that Ms. Parker has authorized this one.
I make the motion to adopt this new policy.
I'll second that. Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reichter?
Yes.
Reister.
Yes.
The second policy, this one just needs to be re-adopted. There are no changes to it. It's called the Code of Conduct Policy. It just basically says that the council will be on guard for any sort of conflict of interest, where an official might have a personal interest, and that those matters would be personally closely scrutinized. And if one is discovered, it would be disclosed, and addressed, and reported to the Department of Community and Economic Development. There's no changes here, it just needs to be re-adopted.
I'll make that question. Sorry guys. Kramer?
Yes.
Reichter?
Yes.
Reister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
That's all I have for CDVG, unless you have any questions at all for me.
Nope. Thank you as always.
Thank you very much.
I'll raise all of them.
Oh, I will. You guys should, maybe you'll see me, you never know.
That's true. No bill asked about him.
I will.
Thank you.
But I think you guys should have watched.
That's for sure.
But thank you.
Ms. Hodge? The agreement?
Yes, so this has to do with the Pennsylvania Municipal Health Insurance Cooperative policies, where they are clarifying some language in specified sections, and you have them in front of you, the bolded type is the new language, and the explanation. For the first addendum item, it has to do with that the, we as the municipality participating have, are obligated to provide the cooperative with up-to-date information on those eligible for the plan. And if by our mistake, somebody receives benefits that shouldn't have, we would be responsible for paying those health claims, because it was our mistake for not providing them that information. And the second one, explanation of what is a minor wording clarification on the payment premium, the new wording is clarified that each member, member of organization has responsibility to pay the obligations billed to them while a member of choir. And these, a debt disaddendum has been reviewed by the solicitor, who did not have any issues with them.
No, and in fact, it didn't change the legalities or the necessities under this agreement, it just basically identified them, okay? So it didn't change anything, it merely made it more clear.
So it's before the council then to approve the amendment, and then if we do, we sign the document and send it back to PNC, and then all, all participants are voting in this way? And if they get a two-thirds majority of their participants, then the addendum will be adopted.
I'll make a motion that we adopt these approved meetings.
Second.
Reister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reichter?
Yes.
Board of Health?
Okay, so I have in your packets, there's a point paper. The first up for discussion is the Board of Health. In discussions with Councilman Reichter, and looking at the Third Class City Code, right, there is the option, so either the city shall have a board, so first of all, the city shall have a Board of Health, according to Third Class City Code. The council may by ordinance create a Board of Health, or in lieu thereof, the council shall be the Board of Health. And then currently, that is our situation. It does allow, in Section 2330 of Third Class City Code, that the Board of Directors of a corporation can be appointed as the Board of Health for the city, but as a nonprofit corporation, that meets a certain criteria. So the proposed option would be to approach a nonprofit corporation for potential appointment of the Board of Directors of that nonprofit corporation as the city's Board of Health, assuming that all their criteria is met. The pros of this, I've outlined there, partnering with a local hospital or health, or health organization would be seen as positive. They may be better suited to address public health matters and interface with the State Department of Health, should that become necessary. It provides also an option for the council to appoint the manager or chief administrator of that organization as the local health officer. The members which serve without compensation from the city, which of course, you're not being compensated, not compensating the Board of Health as it stands, but the fees and penalties that would be administered under the Board of Health would still come to the city treasurer. Cons, we'd have to be careful with this, I believe, because the city council would transfer the power and authority of the Board of Health to this other entity, and it may be more reasonable to keep that power and authority with the city council as it stands today. So, and certain processes that include the declaration of a public health emergency, a public nuisance, a nuisance property, those are things that the council is acting as the Board of Health, making those decisions, and those would have to go to this different So in my analysis, the appointment of a nonprofit corporation as the city's Board of Health is an attractive option due to the pros that I've listed above. However, I think we might have to be careful of it and thoroughly look at the feasibility, second and third order effects, before we would make any decision on that. So my recommendations, there's two, I think that the council could consider. One is to identify a potential nonprofit corporation partner and just explore the feasibility. Or two, shelve that idea and just keep the ad so low. So up to the council to discuss.
I'd like to make a motion that we keep it the way it is.
Second.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reichter?
Yes.
Reister?
Yes.
All right, on the reverse of that page is the description of the local health officer. So the council shall by ordinance determine the manner and method of selection of a health officer, who shall be a person with experience or training in public health working, who shall be, or within six months of taking the oath of office, shall become certified for the office, for the Office of Health Officer by the State Department of Health. And then another section of Third Class City Code enumerates seven or so duties, including making the sanitary inspections or enforcing the food code. In our city code, the, under the Department of Public Safety, subsection G, paragraph G, general health conditions, problems, nuisances, and hazards, except that the city council assembled, shall be deemed, so that's, this is expressing the responsibilities of the Department of Public Safety. And one of them is that the general health conditions, problems, nuisances, and hazards, except that the city council assembled, shall be deemed the Board of Health, and as such, it shall designate by majority vote the person to be appointed to the Office of Health Officer or his assistant. So we do have an Article V in Chapter 28 of our city code that has to do with the health officer. This was adopted in 1958. And there is a second one, Article VII, which talks about a deputy health officer, and that was adopted in 1977. So the current status, the incumbent local health officer began employment in 2009 as a bachelor of science in microbiology, is a certified health officer with the state as of April of 2009. Current salary is $4,000 a year, and then with taxes, workman's comp, another $385. So $43.85 per year is what we're spending for the local health officer currently. This person receives a pension benefit per the 2003 Pennsylvania Municipal Pension Board permanent part-time policy. So the city's pension contribution is based on the number of participating employees, not per employee. This person performs all the sanitary inspections, issues the food establishment licenses. However, she's not actively engaged in other duties as described in 2306 or the local health officer manual, so really just doing the food code and sanitary inspections. From which, you can see the revenues from that over the last couple of years, and then to date in 2019, actually I did get a document from the treasurer's office that is $5,400 for 2019, not the $41.50 that I have there. And the salaries paid from the Department of Public Safety budget. And the line of supervision has not been real clear whether or not this person was mostly interacting with the city clerk at the time versus the department head. There are a couple of options that I've put forward there for consideration. You could keep the incumbent at the same salary, but because they don't necessarily have to be under the Department of Public Safety, they could be moved under the Department of Public Affairs. And in that configuration, the city administrator could be the supervisor and provide the oversight of the program. And the revenues, the salary would remain the same, and the revenues do cover the salary. There have been some questions as to the incumbent's responsiveness and reporting. Option two, convert the salary position to a contract position, then the contract local health officer would do all the sanitary inspections, but we don't know the cost of what that would be until we put out a request for proposals and sock that out.
Joel, do you want to come up with a figure? About $51,000? The total cost for her?
For 2019?
No, no. $43.85.
$43.85.
Correct.
Yeah. $54.
$43.85 to $154 last year. From day to day from 19 to 2019.
$23.85, that's not with the pension though, is it?
Yeah, $200 of the pension.
Yeah, pardon?
$200 bucks in the pension. That's what I used on their coverage.
I'm sorry.
And then option three, I did check with the Department of Agriculture, and they, the Department of Agriculture owns the food code, and they're the ones that train the food code sanitary inspectors. So they are amenable to training code officers to do those food code inspections, and they could do that. The city is still required to appoint a local health officer, so you would have code officers doing the inspections, and you would also have a local health officer who would not have much else to do, the way we currently do things. I think then, whatever we do, that option four is repeal of Article VII, which is a deputy health officer. We don't appoint one, we haven't used one, and with the codification, we can repeal that particular article. So my recommendation, I think personally, is for your discussion, but I would go with option one, move that position under the Department of Public Affairs, have a little bit better oversight and supervision, and continue pretty much as-is, as an uninterrupted program. And then, of course, repeal Article VII for the deputy, for your discussion.
I understand moving it to its health and safety, which would be under the code office. Why would you put it under the city clerk?
Because I, when I look at the, and Joel, you can weigh in here, I don't know if it's just the way I'm reading it, or if it can be interpreted other ways. Check that city code, where it talks about the responsibilities of Department of Public Safety. It's, one of them listed is general health conditions, problems, nuisances, and hazards, except that the city council assembled shall be deemed the Board of Health, and as such, it shall designate by majority vote the person to be appointed to the Office of Health Officer or his assistant. So when I look at that, I think it might allow the opportunity as a, as an officer of the city for them to be under the mayor's department, but you know, I'm just, I'm just looking at it.
The health officer does nothing more than just food inspections. And ever since I've been in office, she's reported to the clerk's office. She hasn't reported to the code office at all. If we would ever get into a jam that we would need a two health officer, I'm not quite sure what the law says we would have to do, okay? But at this point in time, the health board, the council being the health board, is, I think, is what's been sufficient for 50 years or better, as far as if there was any, any health issues arose. And I don't know, once we got to that point, if the county health officer would take over at some point or what, or that, if we got to some kind of epidemic or something. But as long as this is movement over to public affairs, I don't have a problem with it.
And I'd like to make a motion that we move it over to the mayor's department.
Second.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reichter?
Yes.
Reister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
I'm just asking the mayor if we could back up for one second. And this is not regarding the local health officer, but in fact, the Board of Health. And we took a fast vote on that, and I couldn't get in in between. But, and I'm fine with the outcome, I just, and I think that's completely legal. I want to make sure though, that as the city has reinserted itself as the actual Board of Health, that is noted on our insurance coverage, such that decisions made as the Board of Health, which are separate from decisions made as city council, have to be insured separately. Are we all getting that? Do you understand what I'm saying? That it's actually a separate entity, and I want to make sure that entity has its own insurance.
So if we make a decision, this is just a question, if we make a decision on a blinded property as a Board of Health, we have to have separate insurance because of that decision?
If you do it as a Board of Health, yes. Now, not if you do it as a, in your code office or whatever, but that's part of the city. The Board of Health is actually a separate entity, then falling under the city auspices.
That's how we've been condemning them as the Board of Health.
Well, what I'm saying is, for my peace of mind, I would like to know that we have a health policy which covers actions taken both by the members and by the board itself of the Board of Health. Just because you decided to, you know, renew that responsibility, I think we should make sure of that.
Sure.
I just wanted to bring it up before we got into further.
I just asked you a question real quick, because our, our insurance liability and that falls under redevelopment, is the one that, and, so would that be?
I'm sorry.
Redevelopment and the city of Sunbury, and redevelopment authority?
Redevelopment authority has nothing to do with the Board of Health.
Which is separate, okay.
Not to do with separate.
We as a city of Sunbury condemn properties as a Board of Health, and then refer them to redevelopment.
But I think what she's saying is, when we have insurance itself, it comes under the city of Sunbury redevelopment board too. It's all goes with one sentence.
Right.
So we get a claim, right, and you see both entities on the, on the claim itself.
Well, I'm more.
So that's why, as I say, I think she's getting the point, is, do we decide the Board of Health not too?
I know.
And we have redevelopment authority?
I'm fine with that, as long as our insurer is fine with that. My, my concern isn't really regarding the properties, the blinded properties. My concern would be more like, you know, there is a health epidemic, and the council makes a decision as the Board of Health, and it turns out to be an issue. You know what I mean? That's what would concern me.
We just hold you out on the whole morning.
I know. I just don't want to forget to tell you guys, so.
Thank you.
Great, so you have a question, Joel.
Thank you.
Sunset issue.
Okay, so the fire alarm system in this building has some sort of cellular connection in order for to connect with the fire department, as currently on 3G, 3G, there's a sunset to the 3G system, and our cellular communicator will not work anymore. So we were notified by the people that provide us that equipment and that service, that we need to purchase new equipment. And that is before you there, and I guess the question is to get a authorization to go ahead and purchase this equipment, and what account should it come out of?
I said it's something has to do with IT, but you say it's wireless. So probably just take it out of IT account.
This is for all the buildings?
No, just for this one?
Just this building? $1,037.50.
Well, we need the update, I'll make the motion.
It's, I guess, an IT expense.
Second. What's important?
Reichter?
Yes.
Reister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Okay.
The police vehicle financing, so a request for proposal was sent out to three local banks for financing the purchase of the new Ford Interceptor for the police department and outfitting of that vehicle with the equipment and decalings. The vehicle purchase price, $37,577. The outfitting quote was $11,018.60, for a total cost of $48,595.60. The city requires a three-year term with loan, with three annual payments at a fixed rate. So the three quotes that we got from Fulton Bank, it was 3.78% APR. With M&amp;T Bank, they came in at 4.266%, and the Northumberland National Bank at 2.97%. I recommend that we go with the Northumberland National Bank for this loan.
I'll make that motion.
And you do have the money budgeting for your first payment of delivery.
Second.
Reister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reichter?
Yes.
Who's shaking their legs?
I do that without thinking about it. Sorry.
Sorry about that. Okay. So a few weeks ago, several weeks ago, we, the council voted to go with step one with the architecture firm Strauss and Behr to assess the existing conditions of the warehouse at 441 Chestnut Street, as a beginning to assess its feasibility for renovation to become a police department. The Strauss and Behr have provided their report that you have in your packet. It talks about the, they've done the existing floor plans, they've reviewed the structural system, the utilities, and site constraints, and the exterior envelope of the building. Their conclusion was that they believed based upon their initial investigations that the Sunbury Municipal Warehouse on Chestnut Street is a viable structure for consideration to be reused as the city's police department. The building is well constructed and provides on the main level over 6,600 square feet, which should easily accommodate the proposed 4,600 square feet police program. So the question before the council at this point is whether or not to proceed with the remaining steps, and if the original proposal was there, if you look on the back page of the first page, that's page two, step one was $2,500, which we've already done, and then step two is the preliminary design options, and then there's a descriptions of what each of these steps includes. Step three, final design, and step four, opinion of probable cost. Altogether, those steps would cost $6,000 to finish, to get up to having a opinion of probable cost in some initial designs. And so the question for the council is how you would like to proceed with this.
I'd like to make a motion to take step two, and then come back after step two, and give us a preliminary design option and estimated cost. They don't do that. I got faith in them.
It's not in their proposal to us, though.
Well, then they can change the number, but you can't, no sense going all the way down through there and come up with a cost that's too high.
No matter which building is chosen, it's going to be an astronomical price.
Well, let's ask, let's try step two and see what we get.
So step two, they're just going to give us the design options of what the building might look like. But then step three is going to be the final design options, they're going to include our input on that, or, how do you think that's going to work, Joel?
So, I mean, just by reading the proposal.
Couldn't we almost figure out, so much a square foot with the size of it, what that plan is going to cost, and then if we add anything, or whatever we add? I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, they can give those numbers, that's what I'm saying. I don't know why you.
Yeah, they can say, the cost is $150 a square foot, or something like that.
I think they could give you a ballpark, but I think, without going all the way to step three, it wouldn't be as, as exactly what you want it to be, but I, I mean, you all.
I'll second that motion.
Well, even if they come in within $100,000, at least you want a ballpark number, because if they come back, it's $2 million, now we can sit back and think about this. Can I jump in for a second? Just, I would suggest you make that proposal for what you're asking for with a release, such that they can't be held to it in the end. I think that's why they're waiting till after the final design and charging $1,000, so that, because the final opinion will be something that can be held to. I think if you're asking for a preliminary opinion, we just give them a release saying you're not going to be held to this, we're just looking for some idea of cost, if you want to do that, but that's just a suggestion. That's the motion I'm making.
I'll second you. Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reichter?
Yes.
Reister?
Yes.
Counselor Kramer?
We have a general obligation to be out, and we have the money to pay it off. Were we speaking at that? Yeah. Back in last, November, December, we were all loan money, we all know that, we were running some hard times. And the loan we took out was for $250,000, and we had to take the whole lump sum out at one time, and just going to take out what we needed. So we took the lump sum out, and paid the bills, and we're, the city was back to even again, so all with the note. But I took that hundreds of thousands, I stuck it in a debt service account, and during the year with the debt service money that came in, I stuck that money in the debt service account, but accumulated to pay this debt off now in full. In the meantime, we collected about $3,800 worth of interest, and the money that's been sent in this account. All and well, is that the city of Sunbury wants to build a police station, and if we have this $250,000 debt overhead, going out for another million dollars or so, or whatever is meant to cost the police department, we're not going to get it. So I think it would be wise for us to pay this note off early, with no penalties, and then move forward with the debt, or what are you going to do with the police department itself? To me, it makes common sense. If we go down to December, really collect some good interest off this this year, we'll probably get another. If we go down to December, really collect some good interest off this this year, we'll probably get another four, four fifty at the end of this month on interest. So I'll wait until November to pay it off.
I'd like to make that form of motion.
And then I'll tell you what, and then I'll be happy, they, the council did a great job, state of money to make this happen too this year. I mean, the budget is looking good and, um, it was easy to stick money into that debt service without cutting the general fund down to where we're in trouble. So, you know, thank you all for working as hard as you did this year.
So I'd like to make that in the form of a motion that we pay that loan off so we can clear our debt.
I'll second it.
Kramer?
Yes.
Wrightner?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Now, this is the first reading of the budget. We worked on it and everybody was very good about getting their paperwork to us so we could figure it out. And Kevin can continue to elaborate on it with no taxes.
Yeah, so we had a meeting last Monday night and we sat down and, um, had a couple of people debate and they argued pretty much over this department. And so did, um, Chris, a couple of us. But we all worked hard to keep spending to where it was last year in every department, if not lower. Um, so this year we can go without no tax increase on the first reading. Or anything that happens in the next thirty or so days, we'll leave it at the same time. But, um, we're looking really good. I mean, the only thing we didn't really get in yet is, um, uh, the insurance reliability yet. But we already, um, applied an increase on that, so it's in there already formulated. So if it goes lower or higher, we have to adjust for that. But we have, we made the first reading, then after that, we, after we, thirty days, we're going to get, so we're looking at the first meeting and the seventh, we vote for a final one.
Then healthcare, was it four percent this year?
Four percent healthcare, yes.
I'd like to make that in the form of a motion that we accept the budget on the first reading.
Second it.
Wrightner?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes. Yeah, now we have to approve the tax levy, which will remain the same as it was in the past because we're not raising any taxes. So everybody in Sunbury should be happy about that. So I'd like to make a motion that we accept that tax levy as it was.
Second it.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer? Wrightner?
Yes.
And now.
Invoices.
Invoices. We have fifty-seven thousand one hundred twenty-six dollars and ninety-five cents in the general ledger expenses. So I'd like to make a motion that we pay that and the liquid fuel, which is nine thousand two hundred thirty-six oh six.
Second to pay those bills.
Kramer?
Yes.
Wrightner?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
And this, this is among your guys, please watch this back for the next two months. Thank you.
Mr. Wright, so I mentioned your packets. Joe did an excellent job on the spreadsheet for the retirees. He's hoping to see the health care's on the cost this, in the next, uh, roughly thirty years. Life expectancy, so, uh, thank you.
I'd like to go back, talk about the proposed for architecture services real quick. So for an additional three thousand dollars, we can just have them finish the entire thing with the twenty, twenty nineteen budget instead of worrying to come to that three thousand dollars next year's budget.
I, I appreciate that, but we already voted on it.
But I'm, I'm asking, I think it would make sense to bring this back and just vote to finish the entire goal.
Well, we just do what I proposed, then we'll come back and if we don't, we're not satisfied with the answer, we can get the next.
Because it's going to continue waiting, once we receive this next step back, we're going to look at it. And it's all just going to be estimate numbers if they're even willing, willing to do that. Then we're going to come back to the next meeting, remember, there's a month break between now and the next meeting. We're going to vote to accept the, the step three. And then once they come back, we're going to vote to accept step four, we're already into next spring.
Well, the next thing is how long is step two going to take?
I think we should just vote to accept all six thousand dollars of this project. That way we can show the community that we are reinvesting and we're looking into our city-owned properties.
We're all into this project. I just, instead of wasting another three thousand dollars, just take step two and see what happens. Doesn't cost us anymore.
But it does pull the project longer than what.
Well, you don't know the timeframe, you just said.
No one does, but look how long it took for us to get this back and now we're going to begin twenty twenty's budget.
Well, let's take a phone call tomorrow and ask them.
So our next council meeting isn't for a month. I think we should make a motion to accept the entire feasibility study to finish it.
I'll second that.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Wrightner?
No.
Ister?
No.
It's a deadline.
So at our most recent New Year's Eve committee meeting, it was brought up about the open container ordinance waiver that we passed a few months ago regarding Portional Market Street and Third Street. It was brought up about what if the city were to waive the open container citywide? So I'm bringing it up for discussion with the community that is here, with the council members, city administrator. And then at the next city council meeting, that's when a decision will be made, either yes or no regarding citywide open container waiver. And just so everyone knows, if this was to be done, the, the, the local Pennsylvania State Police would be notified about it. That way they know exactly what's going on within the city. We will have extra patrols out from the Sunbury Police Department for New Year's Eve night. There will, there will be no glass bottles allowed on the city streets, plastic bottles or so, um, the plastic solo cups only. The open container does not pertain to vehicles at all. So if you're in your vehicle and you have an open container, you are not allowed, you will go to jail or get arrested, correct? This only pertains to pedestrians walking on the sidewalk. Uh, all other laws are in effect, so if you're drunk in public, you are going to be cited. This is only to waive you carrying your cup of beer or alcohol. The size of the container would be limited to sixteen ounces. That way people weren't walking around with a half gallon or gallon jug of liquor. So I would like some input regarding the public for the citywide open container waiver.
How about if they just do the fire companies can all have open containers? I'd hate to see the whole thing in the city, everybody out front drinking beer and.
Well, the, 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 I can just step in there. Uh, I talked to some of the officers in the department and, and mainly Corporal Brebigna, we, we discussed it. And I know over the last several years, we've had it downtown. I, I don't recall one issue we've had downtown. Um, I, I think what the mayor's trying to say is for the most part, it's more for people that, I mean, it's January first or December thirty-first into January, so it's going to be cold anyways. I think it's more for, we're trying to let people that are out there, in their neighborhoods or out front having whatever, just to have, be able to stand off on their sidewalks. And for, I don't think, regardless of what the council decides to do, I don't think we're going to have a mass wave of people just going around town doing this and doing that. And obviously, we'd have to look at, see what, if we have any incidents during that night, we have to readdress the issue at that time. And like I said, most of the officers in the department, you know, we're going to have some extra patrols out that night. We haven't had too many problems. The problem, Councilwoman Kramer with, with the, the fire companies is, and the local bars, every bar has a liquor license and they have to buy by L C E rules. So if they want to have a certain area besides their area that they have, they have to apply for a special permit. What the city would be doing is just waiving that if people, general people of the public, out of their homes or stuff like that, they want to sit out front, stuff like that, we're not, you know, we're not going to be hammered that much. And there's going to be a timeframe to it also. So it's, it's more like if, if I'm next door to my neighbor and I'm going to walk across the street, you know, we're having a New Year's Eve party, whatever, stuff like that. I think that's what we're trying to look at.
And depending on how this would go for New Year's Eve, if we were to pass this at the next council meeting, we could look at this for the Sunbury celebration for Fourth of July?
I'm in favor of it.
Just a question, so this isn't going to be for people walking from one establishment, three blocks to the next establishment, carrying their.
Yes. Are you going to monitor?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's no, yeah, it's no different than from before. We didn't, we weren't the, the police officers weren't going from bar to bar and watching people walk out the doors. That is up to the establishment themselves. If they, if they choose to let somebody walk out with something, they're taking their own liability in their own hands with liquor control. Because I can tell you this much, over the last few years, we have had liquor control at these events, they have been around. And so that's up to the establishment and I think one of them actually they get cited for it. So the, the establishments have to monitor and most of the establishments downtown, I know this much, have a, a good hold on their, their front doors. So, and that's not, that's not been an issue in the past.
Has any of this been run by the P L and C?
Well, it's, it's not really for them to, to, to do. They, they can still do what they want to do. If, if they see somebody with an open container and, or, um, you know, public drunk, stuff like that, they can, they still have their authority, their statewide. We're just saying for local, we're going to, you know, we're just going to monitor it by our patrols and hopefully, you know, again, we, we haven't had an issue downtown since they started this. So I'm kind of hopeful for seeing any other issues. If there is issues, we, we just readdress it and say we're going to narrow it back down again.
Yeah.
Is there any comment or input from the audience members?
I don't let anybody take anything out of my place.
Yeah, Lori, Lori's really good at that.
Ever.
We, we don't let it either, but I see no problem with this. Uh, you know, if somebody's just walking down the street to their neighbors, what this is designed for, there's already enough laws into effect. And if still drunk can't walk down the street, he's going to get arrested, they can't get in their car. So from a pa, public safety issue, I just don't see a problem with allowing it. It's for somebody having some fun walking around in their neighborhood or whatever. Most bars, I don't think are going to let people take anything out. I know we wouldn't.
No.
I know Lori doesn't. So I, I think it's harmless.
And like I say, the, most of the establishments down in, in the business district have been very good over the last few years during the New Year's Eve of not long after happened. Uh, they say if you want to go downtown, there's a tent downtown, you know?
Right.
They're, they're very good at that, so I'll give them that, I'll give them credit, credit.
Maybe.
Yeah, I just had one additional thing. I think it also just helps like create the little community as part of the New Year's Eve celebration. So if like if people are at the Goodwells, for instance, or some other fire company, and they're enjoying a celebration there. But five minutes before midnight, they want to be able to walk out and then watch the fireworks. They can do that, they don't have to like rush downtown, you know what I mean? It's just, it creates more of a feeling of being.
Yeah, and again, it comes down to the establishment's liquor license, they have to apply for their special permit if they want to extend their, you have a designated area where you're allowed to serve alcohol on your license. You can apply for permits to extend that in, maybe into the parking lot or something like that, you can do that. You have to do, I know most of them are thirty days out, you have to have that stuff in and you're only allowed so many a year. So that's up to, that's up to the establishment itself to do something.
So in other words, you're saying that you were going to let people purchase their own alcohol?
Correct.
For.
Their own party, their own home party.
For public consumption.
Right, they get to sit up in their neighborhood.
Does it change any of the rules on this, what you're.
There would be one thing where, say, somebody wanted to buy a to-go beer, uh, at midnight to walk down the street. Typically, they couldn't walk, one, we would say, okay, they'd get a sealed beer, a can of beer, for instance, since there's a glass thing. They'd buy a can of beer.
They open it up outside.
They could legally walk out the door. If they opened it inside, they couldn't walk out. But if they wanted to walk down and watch the fireworks, yes, we would sell them that beer to go, just like we would sell a single beer or a six pack. So in that scenario, that could happen, but it would be totally legal. Again, I don't see a harm.
But they would have to have a plastic container to pour it in.
Or a can, it can't be plastic, or a can, yeah.
Can you have a block party?
Uh, yeah, uh, and I would welcome the community if they want to throw little block parties for New Year's Eve. If we can get this citywide open container waiver through. I don't see any issue on little city, um, little city streets that have a community event for their little areas.
Well, they have that going on now, don't they? Open containers in the city?
No.
No.
They've been drinking beer in the park all summer long, the drunks.
Yeah, and they've.
And they're down on the street, you're walking, you think they're carrying milk in them bags?
Mr. Bowman, those two gentlemen, that, they were arrested and they were put down.
No, but it was more than two gentlemen.
And they have been all dealt with.
There was, they still, to this day, they still drink beer.
Every, every, every minute of the hour.
No, I'm not talking about the police, I'm talking about the open containers.
Hi, Regina Russell, um, so now, um, I like the big parties. I've been waiting for a big party. What would fall under disorderly conduct if the people are intoxicated and they're running around the neighborhood screaming and hollering and?
Yeah, that, that would apply, that, that also applies. And it also applies if they're, they're acting out and we caught, we catch them, you know, if somebody calls in a noise complaint, somebody's out there acting goofy and we get them, we can still get them for public drunkenness and we can still get them for disorderly conduct. It doesn't excuse any of those acts.
And does the, and is the noise ordinance still in effect that after twelve o'clock, whatever party you're having is quiet now?
And I think, I thought we, did we, I don't know, but we readdressed that for New Year's Eve.
I thought we did too, because I think we.
I think for New Year's Eve, they extended it just because of the midnight.
Extended it to what? I don't, I don't know.
I think it was one o'clock, one a.
One o'clock, thank you.
For New Year's Eve, we extended it.
We all got to remember one thing and, and I like, up organized the last New Year's Eve we had in Sunbury for five years, whatever. It's very cold out.
Yeah.
Very, very cold. And if you go outside and see whatever at midnight, you're not staying out there long. So I don't think you're really going to have too much of an issue. And like Brad said, we really have never had any issues with people as far as being intoxicated, walking around. Uh, it's just too cold to be outside walking.
Sure. Do you want to make the vote?
Continue on speaking with the chairman.
Yes, let me, can we jump in for a second? All right, um, the, I have three suggestions. One would be that we do a, some kind of, even if it's Brad and myself or you, me and Brad Mayer, um, some kind of notice to the citizens, um, maybe put in the paper or something, I don't know how you do it, maybe on your website, saying that basically this doesn't negate all the other laws, you just aren't going to get arrested for an open container, this is what you need to do, this is what it can't do. And as well, maybe do a mailing to anybody who lit a license within the city limits as a, uh, how should I say? Courtesy, thank you, that's what I was looking for, to ensure that they know that it still doesn't change the fact that they're still required to go under the clauses of the L C B. Finally, I think that if there's any idea of taking a vote on this this evening, we ought to do it, or you ought to do it, with the contingency that we ensure that our insurer would continue to insure us for that evening if we would change that law for that evening. We want to make sure we have insurance for that night that doesn't negate any kind of insurance we have. That would be the only qualification I'd make.
Is there any insurance carrier on, they were saying we were fined for New Year's Eve and we opened it for Market Street and Third Street.
Right. My, my, I just want to make sure that having open, getting rid of the open container law doesn't negate that answer. Do you understand what I'm saying? Um, they, they gave us that opinion based on the fact that we had a, you can't have an open container law. So if we're going to have an open container, um, allowed on that evening, we want to make sure that it doesn't cancel our insurance in any way.
Shouldn't you look at more karma and all that and have them block parties?
I don't think they care much. Just a guess.
What's the answer?
Want more public company, you're just going to play guess. Well, I think, I think Gil said that we.
Yeah, so we're going to wait until the next council meeting to make a decision on this. Um, spread the word out that this is what we were talking about, uh, negative and positive, the comments are accepted at City Clerk's office. That we can get some real input from the community if they're willing to accept this or not. All right. Ms. Auger, strategic management.
Okay, so the strategic management planning program, the next update won't be until November twenty-fifth because we sent out the request for proposals, I mentioned at the last council meeting, and those proposals are due the fourth of November. And then we'll be able to look at those proposals on the November twenty-fifth meeting.
Are we, are we having a meeting?
Is it twenty-fifth?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, just Thanksgiving.
Why are we having a meeting in the first?
Yeah, we need to spend, it's going to be eleven. You ready for the next one?
Yes.
Okay, review of municipal liability insurance. So the council has given information and the council now is open to discuss or vote.
And what's the question? Should we stay with our current insurer?
Right, so we have given the, the proposal for both our current carrier and the other company. And I didn't, there were no further questions, there is no further update of information since the last time we met. So the council had all of those, had those proposals to review. And so I guess now it's time to, to vote, so what do you want to do?
Here again, the numbers are, the numbers are relatively close. Other than the fact with our. Other than the fact with our claim ratio on the workman's comp side, this new company won't pick us up for at least two years, I, I think that's right. Because I, I know our, our rates are up, our number of claims are up. Yeah, our rates are up, they'll do it. But, uh, the fact that Purdy's been with us for all these years, you know, and the fact that if we would switch, we still have the issue of the workman's comp. So that's my point at the present time.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we stay with Purdy's. They pay, they give back to the city. It's not just a tape.
Well, it's nice the fact you walk across the street.
Yeah, and they have, when, when we have an issue, they're always there, and they've donated money to us for different things.
Well, you can't factor that part in.
No.
It's the service we've received over the last.
The first year was, the first year was like a five thousand dollar difference, right?
I think five thousand was a, a good number, yes.
You say they're a phone call away, and five minutes away.
Five thousand is five thousand, but we still have the issue with the workman's comp side of it. That we, that the new company can't pick up because of the, the high, uh, claim rate we have. I'll second that motion.
Carl Lovich?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reitner?
Yes.
Eisler?
Yes.
Cable TV.
Cable TV? I hate cable. All right. Every time I move, I'm, you know, so many times in this area, the cable's always a challenge. But anyway, that's beside the point. So, uh, the cable television franchise ordinance, um, cir- ca- yeah. Service Electric Cable Vision sent us a proposed ordinance, and, um, I believe that we looked at that at the last meeting, and, um, you asked me to check with some other municipalities. I was able to check, uh, on some, online on, on some of the ordinances about the, um, the fee. Three to five percent seems to be the, the usual rate anywhere I've looked. So our, the fee that they were going to give us is five percent from their general revenues. And then I did talk to, um, the city administrator, Shmoken, and they actually use a, a consulting firm, uh, to do all their negotiations for, um, franchise agreements. And so, um, he wasn't able to tell me off the top of his head, but that, but they use a firm to, to kind of, uh, evaluate each franchise agreement. I don't know.
Did you talk to Seals Group?
I have not talked to Seals Group.
Joe, one of the issues were, in the last year, year and a half, I've asked numerous times, does any agreement, we could ask for an audit? They never responded to this day. Now, in the new proposal, if I'm not mistaken, Joey, they say we can ask for an audit, but we'd pay for it, okay? Well, first of all, I don't agree with that. They never gave us one that was supposed to be free.
Right.
Okay, so, did you get a chance to review it yet?
I, I didn't even know it existed, to be honest with you. I don't know. Um, I, I didn't, I know nothing about it, I'll be honest.
Well, I think we ought to take, I'll make a motion, we're gonna table it, you review it, and, and write, and anytime they write something out, they're gonna be on their behalf.
Right, sure.
Not us, they're not representing us.
Sure.
And maybe you can do a very good job negotiating for us, we don't need a consultant, so we need you.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
And I tell you guys, six years ago, we were quite somewhere between twenty-four, twenty-five thousand, a quarter off of what we paid on quarterly installments. And this last one came in at nineteen thousand seven hundred, and it's been dropping on a consistent basis every quarter. So either it's formed by the people who have, you know, the cable service in their house, and once they get ready, they're gonna dish, and, you know, who lives out there? But it's been dropping consistently every quarter for the past six years. I don't know, they haven't been cursing the audit ever since I've been here, and it's never happened. And, uh, it was, I suppose it was a free audit, it was supposed to be at their expense, not at ours.
So why don't we contact them, and before we do anything further with this, demand them to do an audit?
I did not see, I don't know where that agreement is about the, the free audit. It isn't in the cor- current ordinance or the, in the code that, that, um.
That audit, it's been brought up to almost every, every time we.
Last one's five years ago.
Right, so when they renewed for the, for the additional five years, did they do one?
Well, it, yeah, it had to come up every five years, it's fifteen years, it's already renewed.
It's ten years and then, and then renewal for five, yeah.
Do you remember seeing anything? No, I don't remember seeing anything like that. As long as I live around, I don't remember seeing.
Michael would have handled that.
Excuse me.
I don't remember seeing. I know that, the bad part of that application, is that.
When I was on council, we had a problem with that, and remember, we went to Pennsylvania League of Cities and Municipalities, and they helped us, and it tremendously changed what we got from the cable company.
We were getting two percent, we went to the five, the five was the last.
Yeah, yeah, so I would strongly urge you to reach out to PLCM, you know, Pennsylvania League of Cities and Municipalities. There was a lawyer in particular that handled franchise fees, and I think as part of the membership that you have, they, they helped us. And it was, it was enlightening because we got a lot more money.
Did you ask any of the cable companies? Isn't that would be almost impossible for anybody to come in here because they have to provide their own lines, their own service and stuff like that? Now, it was, it was approach, uh, talk to some people down when we were in Gainesburg. It does make sense, nobody's gonna come in here, nobody's gonna come in here and millions and millions of dollars and running cable lines. And it's always talking about being sold to, or here, all the time, Comcast or somebody.
Well, the problem is, TV, the way we do it today, it's going out.
That's right.
Computers have it. So I made that for a motion, turn on the second.
Second.
Carl Lovich?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reitner?
Yes.
All right, codification update.
Okay, um, so as you may know, council, the, uh, codification is underway for this year. Um, this is a complete review of the entire code. Uh, we received an editorial and legal analysis that was performed by the project editor from General Code. That is the company that manages our code, prints the code books and supplements, and maintains the Ecode website. The editorial legal analysis identifies potential issues with the code such as, as it's written, such as conflicts between sections of the code, outdated references, conflicts with state law, et cetera. And then they produce a document for the city to answer questions, um, on, based on their review. So that document is eighty-four pages. Pennsylvania law changed recently, before you couldn't make substantive changes during the codification process, now you may. So you can do revisions, you can, um, do minor updates, and then any new ordinance that you want to include in this codification have to be adopted, uh, through the standard ordinance procedures, but then submitted before the company does their final draft. So we need to have everything to them that we wanna include in this new codification. Um, I completed an initial run-through of the entire legal, the editorial legal analysis, and I have created a codification tracker, uh, spreadsheet. There's been a lot of work, many just, um, updating, uh, verbiage. Some of our ordinances were quite old and had kind of antiquated language, some of our ordinances were not really enforceable as written. Some of them, uh, superseded where state law had, had been updated, but we had not updated our own ordinances accordingly. So, um, there's quite a lot of changes that need to be made, there's still some outstanding things that need to be decided. Um, the new ordinances that are, that I have on my radar for being drafted and adopted prior to the codification, um, the Blighted Property Review Committee in that one dole has already drafted. The vacant property registration, that's still being drafted and getting close. Um, planning commission, we do have a planning commission chapter, however, it doesn't reflect what we're currently doing, so that kind of ordinance really needs to be, um, redone. So I think I'm at a point now, uh, and Joel has been able to review the, the spreadsheet that I've made, that has everything that I've looked at so far, so he can check my work. We're at a point now, I think we need to schedule a working session with, with council to go through it, and I'll provide you with the, uh, spreadsheet that I have here, so you can look at it ahead of time as well, and we can schedule a time in the next couple of weeks.
Do we have a due date that this is?
So originally, it was due, uh, the twenty-sixth of September, I got an extension. Uh, I talked with the editor, project editor today, and let her know where we're at, we're getting close to having this document done. So there is no hard deadline, but what will, it will come to though is, we're getting to the end of the year. We are under a contract to pay them for this service, and it's in the budget for this year. So she said we would need to talk to their finance people to see how we could work that out if we happen to go over into the new year. Yeah, I'm, at this point, I don't think that they can provide us with a final draft. Even if I handed them today all of the updates that are needed, it takes them some time to put it all together in a final dra- draft, re, re-index it, and cross-reference it, and, and put it together in final form. But once they do that, then we get a new, new code book, and then they update everything on the Ecode as well. So I know it's getting to the time of the end of the year, lots of things are having to be done, but this is another thing on the list, and so I'll work with Joel in to schedule a working session with council.
What is the pay scale or the, uh, schedule?
The pay schedule.
You had mentioned that on the finance side of it, it was in this year's budget.
Right, so it was, the line item in the budget this year was fifteen thousand, I think, for the codification.
Was your down payment?
That I don't know, that was put in place before I came.
The codification revise, uh, fifteen thousand, you paid sixty-one hundred so far.
So there's a balance of nineteen, or the balance is fifteen?
Eight thousand something.
And we, we do have that wrote over for twenty-twenty, though.
We got eight thousand in there.
I just wanna make sure that we're, we're covered, so.
I'd rather take and run the length of it, make sure it's the lengths that are, right after the printed book out, you say, oh, if you're not.
Oh, yeah, I agree, there's, and there was, there's a lot, a lot to it, a lot that we detailed there.
Well, quite honestly, Jody, I'll be honest, has done a fantastic job with this because it is voluminous. I mean, it's huge, humongous. It would have cost the city a gazillion dollars to ha- in legal fees to have me do this, and Jody has taken it on. I have, I wouldn't say overseen, but I've checked on what she's doing. I've helped on the few issues that she has required help on, but, um, I honestly don't think this really could have been done any faster due to the volume of the project. Um, I think that, and I guess the other thing is, I would agree with you, Jim, that this is not something you wanna hurry, in that, you, you want it to be done right, and we didn't redo this in.
Yeah, how many years?
Uh, it's a, a lot of years, so let's do it right this time, and not have to do it again. I mean, that would be my suggestion.
I agree one hundred percent.
Okay.
All right, so we'll schedule that work session.
Heart and Heritage.
Yes, so, um, okay. Heart and Heritage, so our, our two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary course is in twenty-twenty-two, and I think this is a phenomenally important, uh, thing for us to have a really fantastic event to recognize our history and also set, set, uh, a pace for, for Sundbury's future. It's kind of been this first year, Jo Lynn and I, there are signs to, to pull this Heart and Heritage Committee together, and as we were both learning new jobs, and, and it is a little bit early in the game yet. Kind of started off with a bang, and then it kind of deflated over time with interest. But we'll be reinvigorating our efforts after the new year. Um, I think priorities from right off the bat, starting in January, is to be getting a financial plan together and budget, and then a marketing plan, and beginning, uh, the planning, um, for how we're going to, uh, pay for these events. Things we're looking at is to have like a railroad history day, uh, celebrate our river culture and history, uh, maybe coordinating with the people that make their wine and beer, having special craft beers and wine labels for the events. Uh, Riverfront Festival and a musical or theatrical performance of some kind that recognize our, our history. But that's it, so I think it's a, a reinvigoration after the new year. And then two years, I think, is, is enough time to put together something that's going to really do it as it should be. And I think if we delay any longer than that, we could end up not getting the sorts of entertainment or, or programs and performances that we really want, so. We're looking for help from the public, um, for this committee. I think it's very hard for the city administrator and the city clerk now to be the leads for chairing a committee to plan an event this big. And on one hand, I, I love the history of Sundbury and I want to do this, my heart is in it, but do I have enough time and attention that it deserves? And I think, though, getting a committee together that can work really well together is gonna be important. Comprehensive plan update, so another part of my job is, uh, community development. Um, so the city does have a comprehensive plan which got, was adopted in two thousand twelve. And, uh, when I first started the job first, I was trying to get my arms around what is the plan for the city, and how can we, um, how can we move forward on some community and economic development? So in networking and some conferences and things, I, I ended up meeting with Ted Ritzick from DCED, and he came to the city in June, and we had a, a group meeting, it was really kind of a small group. SRI, the city, the mayor was there, Councilman Reese. Uh, and we also had representatives from the staff of, um, Representative Culver and from Senator Gordner. And we just, at first, this first meeting was really a, a small group discussion facilitated by Mr. Ritzick, and kind of just getting our bearings. We each had to read the whole, uh, comprehensive plan to refresh our, our knowledge of it. And then, uh, from then, we've been meeting monthly and adding people into our group since then. Um, we've prioritized the ten guiding principles for city development, quality of life, mixed use, architecture and urban design, housing choices, connectivity, traditional neighborhoods, increased density, walkability, sustainability, green transportation. So many things have to be addressed all at the same time to move the city forward. We can't just concentrate on only infrastructure, we can't just concentrate only on, on, you know, a neighborhood or attracting businesses. This place, Sundbury needs to be a place that's attractive to people to live and attractive to people to do business. And, um, and a lot of things have to happen in order to, to get that moving. So, where, as we were meeting, the, uh, through discussions with the group, there was kind of some natural groupings into three categories, which led to three subgroups for the committee, uh, for this group. The economic development, Councilman Reese and SRI are kind of heading up that particular, uh, subgroup. Education opportunity and workforce development, Dr. Jason Bendel from the Shiklimy School District, he's participating and he's taking the lead on that one. Uh, community and diversity, we've, uh, United Way is taking the lead on that, Seth Joseph is the, is the guy that's taking the lead for that. And then city administration's role is to support these efforts and initiatives by applying city resources, establishing policies, ordinances, promoting, advocating, um, looking for grants for projects that support the priorities that we identified. So now we're, we've come up with a name for ourselves, we're gonna call ourselves the Sundbury Community Partnership Forum, and it is all about partnerships. It's not just the city working in its vacuum, it's not just SRI working in its stoke pipe, or the United Way just doing what they do, or the school district working independently as well, they all kind of have to live, work together. Um, so the Sundbury Community Partnership Forum is really the, um, will be the, really the umbrella organization for Sundbury's community and economic development, kind of the repository for development activities that are going on across the city. So we plan to meet regularly, so far it's once a month, to communicate and collaborate and connect with resources. At the last meeting, we had, um, our DCED Regional Director, Fadi Ahalma here, so she was able to give us some information about, uh, grants and resources through DCED. And we also had Representative, um, actually Executive Director from Pennsylvania Downtown Center, who was also here, and encouraged us to be designated as a Keystone Community with Main Street and Elm Street programs. I know we've done some of that in the past, it's been difficult to keep things consistent. The point of all this is that it really needs to be a, what I'm gonna borrow from my military language background, is a whole of community, uh, approach to achieve a unity of effort. So when, when the federal government, when we have a national interest, things we would talk about is having a whole of government approach. So it wasn't just the military executing its thing, and it wasn't just the State Department doing its thing, it wasn't just USAID doing its thing, but we all had the strategic objective, and we all knew we were working towards the same thing, applying the specialties and the, and, and expertise that we had in our own right to achieve those goals. Same kind of thing I see in. Same kind of thing I see in this community is a whole of community. So we have SRI, the school district, United Way, the city. Everyone kind of being able to communicate, collaborate together, agree on the objectives and move towards those. So so far, our partners include from the city of Sunbury, the Planning Commission, the Housing Authority, county planning has participated, Representative Culver's office, Senator Gordner's office, DCED, CENOCOG, Sunbury's realization, the Shiklimy School District, Career Link, United Way. And we're even looking for more, even, you know, corporate or businesses, our big employers. You need to have, like I said, repeating myself, all these things working together so that you have a ready workforce, that you have places for people that want to live and want to stay here and businesses that want to locate and stay here as well. So there are good things happening in Sunbury. I want to stress that. I know there's a tendency, sometimes the negative voices grow the loudest. But there are really good things happening in Sunbury. We've been opening new businesses this year, growing businesses, growing police force. We have improved city services this year with nuisance property remediation. The improvements out at Parks and Rec at the break. The DPW has done a lot more this year than they had been able to do in the past with tree trimmings, tree cleaning, brush pickup. We've got these street projects and repairs. We're applying for more grants for continued improvements of that infrastructure. We have an awesome library. We have the YMCA Arts Center. We have the Albright Center. We're doing facade improvements downtown. We've got a horrible Halloween parade just a week ago. And then we have the upcoming 250th Heart and Heritage deal coming up. So I'm excited still about what some possibilities are here in Sunbury. And I hope that the community sees that these positive things are happening and that we can get a little bit of momentum going and then keep that momentum going. So that's all I had to say. Thanks.
That's awesome. Thank you. All right. So another subject, I'd like some input from the audience and members of council. It's been nine months since we've initiated the city administrative position within the city of Sunbury. And it's been a very long time since the city had someone in this position before. So I'd like to know, do you think that the position is working in favor of the city, against the city? If you like how the city's moving forward with this position? If you think there's room for changes or improvement? What's your input and thought on the position of city administrator for the last nine months?
The report you just gave is pretty busy. I think I can tell the tale right there.
I have a quick comment. And Jody, I mean this in the most positive way. I respect what you're doing. But the three things I looked at at the budget tonight is that we are bleeding population, we're bleeding earners, and we are bleeding meter money, which means I think we probably don't have as many business visitors. So those three negative points, I'm really happy with the report you just gave that you're addressing all of those facets before I have to get up and bring attention to all the numbers. So like, I'm grateful that you're in it and that council already looked at the numbers. But I would emphasize, I mean, like seventeen to nineteen, we're down, I think, in earned income tax, almost a hundred grand. That's like one-seventh of the earned income budget. And that's a massive part of the budget. So I don't, I mean, and I offer my time as always or energy or whatever you need, whatever you think you might need because we have to get people back downtown, in town, all around town. But also, we gotta learn, like, not only to attract new people, but keep the ones we have because we're bleeding. And the census data backs it up. I mean, we're, we can't keep doing it.
Yeah, just pursuing the comprehensive plan, pursuing this, what I talked about, the whole community kind of effort is ultimately what you need to do to solve the budget problem.
Yeah. And I agree. And I think, and something else I would say, going away from my normal, I would say, policy wonkiness. As a young person, I actually enjoy Sunbury. I mean, we have a lot that the surrounding towns don't. I mean, if you go to Seal and Scroll, Danville, Schmokene, you know, Schmokene's getting a little better with their new bars and everything. But I mean, like, we have the entertainment complexes, we have the bars downtown, we have places to go. We have a beautiful riverfront that we can go down and run. I mean, somebody smashed up the lights, but I don't know anything about that. So I just want to say as a person, like, as a resident, I'm considering buying a house here and staying here and reinvesting back in the community rather than renting and, you know, just paying like minor taxes. I really want to invest in the community. But I need to see that other people want the same thing. And I think, and I stand by this as like a platform idea, I think we could still reach out to a lot of the universities and do a lot of research here. I mean, we all had to do senior projects. I had two majors and I had to do research for both. So if you get an econ or an economic and an ecology major, you're gonna have to knock out two projects. Like, tend to do feasibility projects. They have the resources to do it. And they can do the resources or the research down at the river. So again, thank you for addressing all those things. And I'm glad that you did before.
The one thing about the distance in the hundred thousand, seventy-five thousand, that is the monies that we're not, we're no longer going to be receiving from the hospital because it's no longer a for-profit place. That was figured into that budget while we balanced.
For the earned income.
Yes, for not making that seventy-five thousand dollars was taken out of that budget as income.
That was from real state taxes and debt. It has nothing to do with earned income. What are you talking about?
So that was calculated as income.
Right, so where, so the part, but then when you find one of the properties.
The earned income's going to come in that way. And then, you know, the people in our city are as an older clientele. So we don't have the young people working like we was. And that's why that's falling, it's probably always falling.
I'd like to say that being on council before, I commend the council for having this position and creating this position. It was a long time coming. Each one of you individually has other careers. You've done a great job and you've put in countless hours. I know from being there myself. But you need a point person who's professional, who can really look ahead strategically at what's going on on a very day-to-day basis. And I think we're very lucky to have who we have. She's done a tremendous job, her enthusiasm, her interest in Sunbury, et cetera. It's difficult for any organization to grow when it's being run only by people who effectively are part-time, even though I know several of you put in full-time hours. So I think it's a wonderful thing that's happened and we're only going to grow. And you can only grow if you have the great leadership and she's able to take your ideas and execute them on a daily basis. And it's been a long time coming. And I'm glad you're here. And I think that's going to help Sunbury continue to improve.
And I was, I actually was curious of what all was getting done too. So I like the fact that you brought that up today and kind of reminded us where all does get done. Kind of holds everybody accountable when you're able to say, hey, this is what I've accomplished. The one thing I really, really appreciate and I love is that I see it on Facebook all the time, what's getting done. Whoever came up with that idea is, I think it's awesome because it's really, I love getting on there and seeing, hey, kudos to the place, or kudos for this, or kudos. I love seeing that things are done. I love seeing what needs to be done. And that goes on on that Facebook page. For the younger generation, I know that they do.
What is it? What is it you do as a young people?
Instagram. So maybe there's some way we can reach out to the youth so that they know what needs to be done. Either I mean, or what, you know, fill them on what's going on. I love the Facebook things. And I'm also the older generation. So I love, love, love that.
Thank you.
I'm eleven years here. I love the Sunbury. And I'm trying to do something for the people, for the community. So I got the building over there to help the market street. Because everything gone and making the foreclosures. If you bring new people here, they're going to be something for the Sunbury. Otherwise, it's going to be very bad. So it's up to you guys to do something before it's too late. I got the building, like I say, I give it free for ten years to bring people here. Everybody's going to benefit to making the Sunbury a better place. That's all I got to say.
Any other? Megan?
I think Jody's done an excellent job, very detail oriented. And finding detail about various ordinances, whatever, that you weren't quite aware of. But I think it's a job that's not easy. And it takes a lot of time, a lot of perseverance. I think the end result will be perfect for Sunbury. Thank you.
Thank you.
Frances?
She always has some phone calls for us when we call.
And I made cookies for people.
Megan?
I can attest to the cookies, but everything else, I completely agree with everyone that I would, that everyone has said, with Bob's comments. I think that this was sorely needed. Jody's been executing all the things that we really want. Thank you very much. That we've really been hoping to see for the city. We were kind of stagnant in a way. We all wanted to see more parts of things happening, but they weren't able to be executed. And she's really executing and making these things happen, trying to address problems that have been kind of simmering but never had really been addressed and trying to be taken care of. And huge kudos for that because some of the things are very challenging issues. They may be minor, but people have vested interests in them. And how do you handle those fairly? And Jody's really been taking them on. The one thing I would caution council about, I know we're in the middle of the fiscal budget and we have to be very cautious about it. But please remember that we don't want to burn out these really great people that we've gotten this year. That they are, we may need an additional support staff in that office to actually be able to execute all these things that we want to see happen. And that's nothing against them. That's just to say, we want to support them so that they don't get burned out. And just like, for instance, there's things like that might not be happening, perhaps like grant writing. I know we were doing a little bit more of that perhaps in the past. And so things like those types of support activities are very time-consuming. We don't necessarily want Jody and Jolynn taking a lot of time on that. So just something.
Megan has put money in there to hire another person in that office.
All right. Thank you very much.
Anything else?
Yeah, I have two things. Well, not on that regard.
All right. How's the Police Department with the city administrator position?
Oh, it's been been good. I know a lot of times I've called down and asked her to check into things and I get an answer before I hang the phone most of the time. No, it's been, it's actually, it's been really, it's been working really well. I like to have a point of contact with somebody because, again, like somebody said, everybody in the council sometimes are really busy. So I like to be able to call somebody, that they get the answer because we're tied up with something else. So I commend what she's done so far.
All right. Open it up to council members themselves regarding, what's your thoughts and feelings regarding how the city's moving forward with having a city administrator?
I agree to comment. All the time she's spending that whole project and everything she's putting together, she's spent a lot of time on it.
Yeah, she's putting in a lot of time and stuff in. She's got a lot of hats to wear. And it's not going to all come into place at one, at one point. You know, it's got to be worked out for the receptions at the time.
My city clerk?
I love working with you.
How much do you want?
Cookies.
I think for me, now that I have a full-time job and it does keep me out of the office during normal business hours, I like it because I'm able to call the office, get some updates. If there is something that needs to be done. I have Jolynn, I have Jody. They're helping to keep an eye on the mayor's office and every other department within the city. I think it's great having like a central person that we can actually go to that knows almost everything about each of the department. They're still learning, but they're learning so much in such a short amount of time. It's, I can already see the pros of it all. So I'm definitely for the city administrator position. How's your solicitor feel?
At the risk of sounding like Jim, I think they already commented. Yeah. No, but I mean, honestly, when I saw her, she's done a fantastic job with the codification, with everything she's working on. She's always timely in responding to any questions I might have. And even more timely in getting out questions too easily that I have time to answer. And no complaints here.
Councilwoman Beth?
I think she's doing a good job. I think she baked the cookies, so I'd say that.
How many cookies did you bake about?
First, it's supposed to.
I made them for something else. They got the leftovers.
Very personal, which is one thing that's important.
How, Kevin, how's the treasurer's office feel regarding having a city administrator working with the budget for the city for some of the long time?
Worked well. I think it's going really well. But I never ever experienced that year and giving guys somebody praise while saying they're saying, oh, this is. But I mean, seriously, I didn't see anything like this. I mean, we were, I worked with Jody, Jody worked with me, and I didn't really.
And the reason I've done this tonight is because I am out of the office a lot. I do get to hear bits and pieces from the community when I'm walking around, how they feel. I do hear from the employees. But I wanted to actually open it up during a council meeting to actually hear everyone's input regarding this position since we are closing in on the first year. So with that being said, is there any audience comments? Yes.
Sorry. I know we all want to go home. I certainly do. Two things. Number one, shade tree commission.
Did you see we put two grand in the budget period?
Yes, I was, thank you for the two grand first, first of all. We were looking to have an alternate. Right now, we are going to redo the ordinance. But we were looking to have somebody volunteer to be an alternate. So in case with only three of us, if one person can't make it, we can't have the meeting. And that's problematic. So in the short time, we're very much interested in somebody who might do it. So we're doing that. And then I just wanted council to give us your opinion, not this moment. But we were talking about going from a commission of three to a commission of five, as it is in a lot of other places, like, what was it, Allentown?
Lewisburg.
In Lewisburg. The only problem that I see with that is we had a heck of a time getting three, so I'm not sure how we can get five. But we would very much like council's input as to that with the shade tree commission. We have had very productive meetings so far and Chainsaw Bob got another one that's going to come down. So just so you know. Now I got a haircut too. Now, the next issue, you've always, I believe, been given a copy of this municipal noise ordinance. And I'd like to stress to you that one of the things that I've seen positive that's happening in the community, and disclaimer, of course, I have a vested interest here. I have opened a new establishment in town. So I am self-serving when I'm saying this. But I've talked to other bar owners. And the way the liquor code reads right now, the LCE, if they are standing outside of your establishment and can hear amplified music, not out, not with a decibel meter or anything else, can hear it, that's a violation. That's problematic for any and every establishment in the city that has a liquor license. It's particularly problematic for us because I have an open door. So there's no doubt they're going to hear it outside it. But I don't care what bar you stand outside of if there's entertainment. So I'm asking you to look at this ordinance. It does take at least sixty days for this to get through the liquor board. It's fairly straightforward, but that would be something that I would think that we would ask the city solicitor to actually put together. But I believe we benefit our ever-growing downtown. I think it's really positive what I see happening. I know the comments coming into our place. They're happy that another place is open. I'd like to see more restaurants and bars open. But this would take the city to adopt their own noise ordinance, petition or send this, yeah, petition basically, to take over the responsibility, which would include the police department then enforcing this rather than the liquor control board.
Have we had issues in the past with liquor control board with the noise ordinance?
Yes, yes. There have been bars cited for noise recently even, not mine.
And this is just with the liquor, liquor control board being here? This isn't like the community calling liquor control?
No, but it only takes one phone call from anybody and they come and respond to it. But if they're out doing a sweep or doing something and they go by, they easily could, they literally at a time could come in and nail every bar in town any evening they wanted. I'm not suggesting that they do that, but I'm saying it's something that many cities have adopted this to make an entertainment district. My suggestion would be the very least that it would cover where we have our things now, from Chestnut Street over to Woodlawn Avenue, covering from Market Street to Eighth or Tenth, right, right and around there. That should cover anything in that. Then I would also ask or put out to the fire companies, because there has to be maps in specific designated areas that you have outlined and have defined with the, I don't know with the, like the Americas versus there, if we can do specific areas besides and do a little bubble around each one of them to also, you know, help them with this problem too because they certainly do entertain it. But at the very least, I would ask council to consider and very quickly consider. But at the very least, I would ask council to consider and very quickly consider adopting this and putting the petition into the liquor control board. Any?
Well, I'll just make a motion to have our solicitor review this and get us more information at the next council meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And could you give us a quick update regarding the shade tree commission and what you all have been doing since you recently formed?
Well, we're still looking at. Yeah, we've had some tree issues that we've had to deal with and we are taking steps on those. And basically, the next thing we have to do is redo the actual commission itself. And we're looking at Lewisburg, Allentown, a couple of those that it seems like they've got it working. And we're just going to kind of tailor it into our community. But pretty much it's the same wherever trees are trees. The big thing is three people versus five people. That's one of the questions that we'd really like council's input on. Unfortunately, we don't seem to have much interest for volunteers on it. It's not exactly a glamorous job, but.
It seems a little shaky to me.
What's that? It's a little shaky. Yeah, it's a little shaky. Other than that, I mean, we're meeting monthly. We're meeting our obligations. We've had, we've worked with the code office. We've looked at Ridge and, and I guess that's going to come to the solicitor here. We've asked the code office to come in, but at Ridge and Race Street, we have recommended that that be taken out. I will have to have the code office send them a registered letter that they have thirty days to do it. That's not going to happen. Then it would come back to, what do we do as the city to take it, mitigate the problem? Which will, my, our opinion is that through the solicitor, we would end up having that done. The city would do it or whoever we would hire. And then we put a lien against the property to hopefully recoup the money at some time. But at this point, when it's a public safety issue as bad as it is, I think it's incumbent upon us to move very quickly to have this mitigated because clearly the tree could fall down and hurt somebody. And once you know that, you kind of, you got to deal with it. So we are recommending that that be done. And thank you to Jolynn for being our independent secretary. But it's been very positive. We're, you know, it's a necessary thing. But we do need some volunteers.
All right. Well, thank you, T.O.
Thank you.
All right. Any other audience comments tonight?
Yeah, you got a motion.
We've got a motion. No, no motion. Sorry, second.
Turn it on, Joe.
Any other comments?
Oh, there's a second.
Yeah, Jody's second. Kramer? Yes. Kramer?
Yes.
I, or Harley?
Yes. All right. Any other audience comments tonight?
I believe street sweeping starts again tonight.
Yes, street sweeping season is back.
Street sweeping starts again tonight. Until twenty-second. Till one second of November.
Trigger treating.
Oh, trigger treating has been pushed back until Saturday due to weather for the city of Sunbury.
Really?
It's raining all day.
All right. Next council meeting isn't until November eleventh.
No, twenty-fifth.
Okay, twenty-fifth. Next council meeting is until twenty-fifth. Thank you all for coming out. This meeting is now adjourned.